I order the city council regular meeting for today, Monday, May 20th. We will take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Councilmember Barxdale.
Present.
And Mayor Garrett.
Present. I invite everyone in the audience to say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of items H and J.
So you just want to remove H and you want to table J?
Yeah, well, I guess, yeah, I guess.
Remove H and then table J, right?
Table J, are we removing H?
Yeah, completely remove it.
Remove H and table J.
Second.
Third.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barxdale.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. All set, got everybody? Great. And I am really happy to introduce the Chair of the Southfield Public Schools. Yep, you're up. Thank you so much for coming on, I appreciate it. School Board, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor Garrett, Mayor Pro Tem Cantor, and the scheme council members. Thank you so much for having me. So Councilman Jennings, myself, and Mayor Garrett have been talking for a while about improving relationships between our municipalities and the school districts. So this is the olive branch that we have both extended to ensure that you all are kept abreast of what's going on in the school district. So the first thing I want to say is thank you to Mayor Garrett for first lifting this and coming to us and saying, hey, we need to improve this, so let's make it happen. And to Councilperson Jennings for reaching out to me. We had a great discussion and I asked him to come represent the city of Lathrop Village last week at our board meeting and we introduced our brand-new representative, student board rep, Michaela Beckford, who will be coming and reporting out on a monthly basis at your meetings, letting you know what's happening with the school district.
That's great, thank you.
So, a couple of things we have on the docket. I know everyone has heard about the bond that passed and the work that we're going to be doing. So first things first, we're going to be repairing a lot of the potholes on the university campus. That is not a resurfacing. It's just a mandate until we can start the construction, which will take place beginning in 2025. We've selected an architect, so for any of you who actually want to listen in or lend voice to those committees, please come out. We're going to ask for people's input on how we make it a real community space. And for those of you who don't know, Southfield Lathrop is getting a facelift. As a former graduate of Southfield Lathrop, go Chargers, it's an old school. It has not had any maintenance done in over 59 years. And so we are going to keep the athletic wing, which has an Olympic-sized pool, but we're going to make it ADA compliant, which it is not right now. And then we're going to do some facelifts to the auditorium, but everything else will be new. What that also means is that McIntyre becomes a community center. And with that being said, you're going to have an egress road from Southfield Lathrop to McIntyre, so that buses can get out on Evergreen instead of clogging up 12-mile road. That also means that you will have a walkable track around that very wooded area that exists with benches, things of that nature for the community, instead of the community using the surface track. So I implore you, come out as we start to survey the community. I would love for some of you to get on our committees. Last but not least, on June 16th, we have invited the mayor and city council to be a part of a ribbon-cutting at Lathrop Elementary. It is the first school that actually is done under the bond, so we're really excited. That's new HVAC, safety windows with what we call pseudo-bulletproof glass that meets school requirements federally, and some other really nice failsafes, new Terrazzo, new everything. It puts us finally in the 21st century. So those are just some updates. We welcome any feedback regarding landscaping, potholes, sidewalks, even though the sidewalks necessarily aren't our responsibility, we are doing our best to maintain them for our community. So if there was any questions from the council, I'm willing to take them.
I have questions.
Councilman Hammond.
Yeah, so Ms. Blant, thank you for coming.
Of course.
I didn't catch your name when you first introduced yourself.
My name is Ashanti Blant, I am the President of the Board of Education.
You mentioned that there are going to be committees to support efforts that are being funded by the bond, right?
Yes.
Are there other committees as well, or just the?
So the main committees are, we're looking at input on architecture, what do we want to see for the buildings. There's going to be committees on the use for the community center, which is McIntyre Elementary. And just input on how we could better communicate, as we start construction, we want to keep the community aware, right? Because we always have construction going on and it will probably impede upon 12-mile. So we want to just keep that lifted and get more feedback from you all and just have that open dialogue, right? The committees for sure on what you want to see in that building, though. We want to make sure that we make it a space for all.
What's the process to express interest and participate in?
So James Jackson normally will reach out to this council, making them aware, as well as Southfield, of the process that we're going through. Sometimes he'll place a call to the mayor. I understand that Councilman Jennings is our new liaison, so we will probably go through him for him to disseminate the information. And then he will give us names and then we'll have our admin send out dates and times for those committee meetings.
Great, okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Anything else?
No, but thank you so much, Ashanti, for coming.
Oh, no problem.
This is such, this is great. I know we've been working on this and I'm just thankful to be able to have the school board come and share what they're working on with our city and also with Southfield. So I'm just so grateful that you had some time out of your day to come here and don't feel forced to stay.
I actually have a GM meeting and it's with some people in Korea, so I am going to run, but thank you so much for having us. Again, we'll get on your schedule so Michaela can be on the agenda. And hopefully we'll have some drawings for everybody very soon in which we can choose from layouts, okay?
Yes.
And I did exactly what Jalen said, because it was a long time coming.
For sure.
And I appreciate you being willing to extend the olive branch as we are giving it to the Southfield office.
Thank you guys so much for having me.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Next, we will have a presentation or actually do the proclamation for the National Gun Violence Awareness Day. If you want. Come up and explain it again.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Garrett, and council members for inviting me to be here again. This is probably about the fifth time that I've come to talk about Gun Violence Awareness Day. The first Friday in June, we observe Gun Violence Awareness Day. When I say "we," Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense and many gun violence prevention organizations around the country. It's held this first week of June to commemorate the shooting of a young woman in Chicago. Her name was Hadaya Pendleton and her friends didn't want her to die in vain and they chose to remember her through this event, the first Friday in June, by wearing orange, because orange is the color that hunters wear, so no one shoots them. So there are many faces of gun violence and there's not something that each person feels that I, it seems to me that each person knew something. Everyone can't do everything. But we all can talk about gun safety in our homes and families and friends. We can practice safe storage, which is now a law in Michigan. We can show concern when members of our family and friends and neighborhood are not acting sensible and have a firearm in their possession, because we have a law for that, too. We can encourage people to register their firearms, we have a law for that. And we can also tell people who are in a situation of domestic violence that they are protected by a law. This is really wonderful that we have these four new laws. And now I ask everybody on the 7th of June to wear orange and to practice safe gun storage in their homes and with their friends. And I appreciate you allowing me to be here.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you for following up.
I forgot to say, I'm Susan Legessian and I'm from Southfield and I feel very welcome every year when Lathrop invites me to do this. Thank you so much.
Thank you for following up, I appreciate it. So this proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Lathrop Village, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor Kelly Garrett of the city of Lathrop Village declares the first Friday in June, June 17th. I mean 7th, I see it's in, it's in here twice, that's all right. I'm Ron Burgundy, I just read what's in front of me. June 7th, 2024, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives on this 20th day of May 2023.
24.
24.
Again, I read what's right in front of me and it is 24. No problem, I understand. Next, the public comment for items that's on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes and there are, I guess, rules on the back page of how to address the council. Does anybody, would anybody like to be heard? No one? Uh-oh, wow, okay. Now we'll go to, I'm in shock. Consent agenda, all items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. Thank you, Suzanne. Who would like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, third.
It's been moved in second, is there, well, there will be no discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barxdale.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Thank you. Now we'll open up the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. If anybody would like to speak regarding the budget, please come to the podium and state No one wants to say anything about the budget, then we will close the hearing and move on to the actual requests for consideration and approval. First up is requests to approve resolution number 202405, annual fiscal resolution, fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. As we've discussed over the past month or so, we've been reviewing this draft budget and we believe we have a good budget and fiscal plan for this next year in front of you. Staff has worked tirelessly, I can't thank them enough. This naturally been a process, the transition of staff that we've gone through. So the budget in front of you retains our mileage as it currently is. It is balanced, we will add a little to our fund balance this next year, but this next year, even though it is balanced, we think years going forward is going to be a challenge. So I think we are going to accomplish a lot this next year, but going forward, the city, we are going to talk about it later in the agenda, but we're going to have a lot of decisions to make, but I'm just happy with how this budget turned out.
I appreciate that. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2425 budget.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Mike for, and Michelle, for all the hard work you guys did to put this together. And I know coming in new, it's, it's difficult to pick up what somebody else has done and then try to make it your own, but also make it informative and it's very, very painless process, so thank you, guys.
And kudos for finding a way to get a surplus this year, even however small it might be, it's something. And keeping the mileage rate static, also great.
Anything else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barxdale.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Next, we have the request to approve the 2024-2029 capital improvement plan.
So go along with your budget, every single year, city council adopts a capital improvement plan. Eric from Giffords Webster kind of spearheads this with our community and economic development director. And as you are aware, the planning commission does a full vetting of this and holds the necessary public hearing. So this is to have a discussion with you and hopefully approve it.
So last month, the planning commission did hold a public hearing. There was very minimal comment in response, but we spent the last six months or so putting together, working with the departments within the city to compile essentially a wish list is what the CIP, the capital improvement plan, is in order to put that on the radar of the priorities of each department's wish list. So in your packet, you have a copy of the CIP report. If you look towards the back, some of the write-up for the utilities departments was quite extensive. And so what we've kind of adopted in moving forward is to put that data within a table to make it easier to reference. So that's something that we can continue forward with when we do the CIP next year. So as Mike said, today we're here to consider the draft of the CIP and for adoption.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I really appreciate the additional effort that you guys put into putting the tables in there. When it comes to utilities, water, sewer, it's just much easier as a person who doesn't look at this stuff all the time to be able to get a sense of how much work was done the previous year, how much we're targeting in the future. It also, I think, helps to put a focus on investing in infrastructure, since those items are part of the infrastructure, and to make sure that we're, everybody in the community, not just the council, is cognizant of the improvements that need to happen so that we don't neglect the infrastructure of the city.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Thank you. Next is request to approve special land use, 26727 Southfield Road, BP Gas Station.
Turn this over to Eric.
So the next item for consideration is the BP gas station at 26727 Southfield Road. This is a relatively new development, as a gas station and convenience store. The special land use that was requested by the applicant was submitted a month or so ago and it went before the planning commission as a public hearing in April. There were some comments, the planning commission had a spirited discussion in regards to the use for the special land use to sell alcohol. However, the planning commission did recommend approving and forwarded it to city council for consideration. The applicant is here this evening, if there's any questions for them, I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve the special land use request for 26727 Southfield Road.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. I'm curious, because I know at the planning commission meeting, you guys stated that it was, you know, classy gas station, the signage for if you were to be approved for the liquor license. Have you guys thought that through? Have you guys thought, I mean, I know I can't really confirm or deny your, what you put up there, but have you guys thought it through? Because I know that was a real concern of the residents, is you guys actually upholding your classy gas station? And so I'm just curious if you guys have really thought that through, because I know it's a concern of residents and concern of residents who live right there. I know they chose to live near a business district, but they're still concerned of the, of the traffic and the signage that, you know, what it will bring to their, like how they will be impacted in their neighborhood. So I'm just concerned about that and wondering, have you guys put some real thought into that, into ensuring that you keep up a classy appearance?
Can I just partner, Terrence?
You can go to the mic.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for that. I'm attorney Dave Draper and I've represented the client through this. And as we indicated, they're approved by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, obviously suggested, approved by, for the special land use a month ago, give or take. And, and, and we welcome that dialogue. So I'm going to turn it over to my client. Terrence owns over 25 gas stations, three of which have liquor licenses, so he's very well experienced in this. But I'd like to keep this dialogue open off, I'm hopeful that we are approved or they are approved, but we're very, you know, they want to be good neighbors. So particularly Councilman Jennings, if that's something we could discuss after the meeting, that would be fabulous, assuming we're approved. But I'll turn over to my client, who I know has had a chance since last month to think about it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. In regards to the signage, we have been already approved by the building department to, where the tower is in the corner, two signs. And we are using one for the chicken-to-go restaurant and the other side, which is facing north, we're using that for the liquor sign. It's going to be a nice-looking sign, as I believe the chicken-to-go sign is as well nice and decent and clean. It is not like a vinyl or anything, it's going to be LED and back halo light, so it's going to be matching the expensive building and image that we spend on that corner, keeping the beauty of the city, as we have promised from day one. As far as the traffic, for extra traffic or anything, there was actually a request from your company at the early stage to have a traffic report done. And in that traffic report, I was really amazed to see they had in the consideration the increase of traffic in that, in and out for the driveways for the gas need, if the gas prices are competitive, if there is a need to get more traffic to the store or something. So everything was calculated and approved by the ordinance and the requirement, of course, not only for the city, the Emmett as well, and the Oakland County Road Commission. So we're not really expecting more than normal. We're not going to sell things for free, to expect something, of course, the neighbors would love that, but it's going to be a normal kind of conducting business and pricing and keeping that a nice decent image, as we always promise you, and clean as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, you know, make sure you uphold that, because I know you also stated that you're in competition with the gas station on 10-mile road and, and they've like hurried up and plastered this black liquor sign up and let everybody know they have liquor, beer, wine. And I'm just, I'm just hopeful that you're not that much in competition with them, that you'll lower your standards to what, what they produce, so.
My comment to that, and I mean, as I'm new to the liquor business, my two partners here are experts, actually, but as I learned, the liquor customers, they don't go for the pricing, they go for the service and the convenience to find their own things. So they customize to a certain location. So we were just rushing to get it sooner, so we capture more customers to us, but they beat us to it anyway. But hey, we're going to compete and we exist in that business as well.
To Jalen's point, so they already have signage up, calling attention to the fact that they are selling beer, wine, and liquor. And so if you need to also put signage up, advertising that your facility is selling beer, wine, and liquor, it just needs to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Absolutely.
Right, and they're maxed out on signs as it is. And the other good thing is that we've started enforcing the 10% window coverage.
Yeah, and I'm aware of all of those things, I know you will comply. I'm merely talking about cosmetics. I might be being a little selfish here, but I know that you're complying with everything else. I'm merely being selfish in the cosmetic, something that we can't really grade you on, but I'm just expressing my emotions and my feelings and I'm representing the community, because I've heard their concerns. So I just want to make sure I make that clear. I know you'll follow the ordinance to a T, but cosmetically, we can't really do anything. So that's why I just wanted to express my opinion.
Thank you for bringing that up. We definitely go with the ordinance all the time. Actually, we were applying for the LED message center and until now, we could not have it because it's not in the ordinance. We have to follow the protocol. We cannot just do things in our mind like that. So that's absolutely what's going to happen exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not totally germane to what's on the table, but you did say something that kind of keyed me, that the liquor sign will be a halo sign. Just keep in mind that the ordinance requires only white for the halo and it can't extend more than four inches past the.
Oh, the backlit sign?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you for bringing that up, too.
Because people aren't always aware of that, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Thank you.
We're not alone, can I ask?
No, not at this side.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Jennings.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Next, we have the request to approve the 2024 sewer cleaning and televising.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm filling in with Scott, for Scott Ringler tonight.
Okay, thank you all.
So working with engineer Ringler, we have identified roughly 3,500 linear feet of dead-end sanitary sewer, ranging from the size of eight inches to 12 inches throughout the community. So the purpose of this project is to televise and clean those dead-end sewers, and then once we're able to identify them, to install manholes in them. So in the future, if there are issues, they're easily accessible. Because what we're running into right now, whether it's our DPS crew or contractor, if we're having an issue in one of these dead-end manholes, they have to go find a manhole way up the pipe and then hopefully they have enough equipment to reach these dead ends. So we're just trying to finalize the contingencies for these projects. And including the packet we received, we went after five specific companies that specialize in this type of work. And we've seen very competitive bids, with them almost, the low bid almost being exactly what the engineer estimate was. So we are recommending Duke's Root Control be awarded this contract.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 sewer cleaning and televising.
There a second? Thank you. It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is just somewhat of a continuation of what we did over the capital improvement bond, where we installed, I think it was eight or 10 dead-end manholes. And the company that's being recommended, while it's now Duke's.
It's Pipe Tech now.
It's Pipe Tech and Pipe Tech is who, who we used during the capital improvement bond and we were very happy with the work that they did, so.
Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barxdale.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have the second reading, request to amend ordinance, chapter 10, for animals, article.
Oh, sorry, four, ah, four.
Pet acquisition.
You're still shy from like five years ago.
Got to work on those Roman numerals. So council, this is the, as indicated, this is the second reading of the pet adoption ordinance that was initially brought to council attention by, by Councilmember Hammond. So there are no changes to this from the first reading. If approved tonight, this will be published and effective 10 days after.
Uh, if approved tonight, this will be published and effective ten days after publication.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to ordinance, Chapter Ten, Animals, Article Four, Pet Acquisition, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have the request to approve the Resolution 2024-06, opposing DTE Energy's proposed electric rate increase.
Oh, I actually turned this over to Councilmember Hammond, who brought this to our attention.
Yeah. So, um, DT has, um, made a proposal to the, uh, Michigan Public Service Commission requesting a three hundred, uh, sorry, um, of, of over four hundred mil- uh, million-dollar, uh, rate hike, um, uh, for approval by that commission. This resolution is standing with other communities nearby us who are opposed to, uh, that being approved by the Michigan Public Service Commission. So the idea is to try and pull support from multiple communities and also residents who can send comments into that commission, um, in order to try and prevent, uh, an increase in the electrical rates for all residents and businesses here and in the surrounding communities. So the proposal, a couple of highlights from it, it highlights the fact that DT is the sole provider of electricity to this city. This is true of other cities as well. Um, DT did receive approval for a three-hundred-and-eighty-six-million-dollar rate hike in December of 2023, so it seems, uh, heavy-handed to do another rate increase so soon. Um, DT did report a profit of one-point-four billion dollars, with a B, in 2023. Um, if the, it's a four-hundred-and-fifty-six-million-dollar rate increase proposal in front of the commission, if it's approved, it would be the largest rate hike in Michigan's history. Um, we are a state that is the second, has the second highest instance of power outages in the nation between twenty, two thousand and twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we are the, we have the fourth longest power restoration time after outage among all the states in the union. We are way at the bottom in terms of how long it takes us to recover from, uh, power outages. So the service quality, I don't think, uh, supports the increase in the rate hike. Um, we currently, as a state, pay the eleventh highest rates in the nation for electricity, so adding additional on top of that would just put us even higher up in that category that we don't want to be in. Um, and ul- ultimately, uh, you know, we're just trying to send a message that, you know, they, they need to do a better job improving service quality at DT before we, um, are willing to take on additional costs in paying for electrical service from them.
Thank you. Um, anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 2024-06, opposing DT's energy proposed electric rate increase, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Next, we have the, thank you. We have the request to approve Resolution 2024-07, approving MDOT Transportation Economic Development Fund, Category B Grant Application for Fiscal Year 2025.
So every single year, MDOT releases their Category B grant. Uh, what essentially is, it's a stopgap measure for smaller communities who need assistance with funding road projects. Because as we all know, funding roads is very expensive, and when you're a small community, your act of two-one dollars can only go so far. So what this program will do, it will match fifty percent of a project up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Um, so the purpose of this resolution is to authorize staff to submit this grant to MDOT and to see if we're going to get awarded. Working with Engineer Ringler, uh, we were looking at naturally big-ticket items, because if you're going after this type of grant, you want to get the biggest value you possibly can. So what we identified was to submit this project for Rainbow Circle. Uh, this would remove the concrete, remove the bad asphalt, replace it all with asphalt. Uh, total project costs, we're estimating is five-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand dollars to redo this road. So if we were awarded via MDOT, we would get two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of it, and the city would still be on the hook for two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. But it would be in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, so we would have time to plan. But these type of grants, they are released every year. We are intent, we'd be hopefully to apply for them every year, but we are always going to go after big-ticket projects when we do it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-07, approving MDOT Transportation Economic Development Fund, Category B, Grant Application for Fiscal Year 2025.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, it would be great if we could get this, because I felt really bad during the bond, the three years of the bond, talking to those residents every year about not being able to do anything for them because they were concrete roads, and, and I have a personal vendetta against that road since it took out my collarbone. So, uh, that would be great if we could get this.
Yeah, and it's great to have the matching funds. Um, this is the way to do it, right? We're a financially, you know, we, we have budgetary challenges that we got to work through, and so the more help that we can get from grants, the better. That's why we actually approved, you know, signing a contract with a grant application company. I know we probably don't need them for this specific grant, but, um, anything that we can do as a city to continue to look into getting grant fund, money to help us pay for important infrastructure projects and other projects, but especially infrastructure projects is great.
Yes. And like I asked Mike, maybe we can throw in a stop sign over there somewhere.
Thank you. Is there any further, uh, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have the request to approve the Lathir Village Historical Society Partnership Agreement.
As Councils are aware, over the past couple of months, we've kind of been going through this process of establishing partnership agreements with some community organizations for a good long give and take between the organization and the city. Uh, before you guys, we have the Lathir Village Historical Society, and what they are looking for from the city is they're looking to move their storage of their historical, all their historical information from the Southfield Public Library essentially to the old fitness center in the basement that's no longer used, as fitness center is just used as storage. And in return, they, they will be our, our history zaz for the city.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the Lathir Village Historical Si- Society Partnership Agreement.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think this is great, too. I mean, they came to us, I think, three years ago, was it, uh, when, when, uh, when, uh, the building was sold to the south of us and looking for a home, and we didn't have a place for them. So it's great that we do now, and I think this'll not only help the Historical Society, but also help the residents who want to learn more about later history or their homes. I know I saw the original, uh, blueprints, uh, back when it was in the building south of us, uh, of my home, which was kind of cool to see, and, um, so I think this is a good thing.
Yeah, I think this is important. Robin Roberts, who's the head of the Historical Society, is here tonight, was mentioning before the meeting that, uh, because Louise Latha Kelly saved everything, we actually have a lot of documents about the history and the development of our city over time. Um, and this group is, one of their ac- uh, main activities is to maintain and protect those documents. So if it's possible for the city to provide, uh, support for that in whatever way we can, including a space to put it, uh, I think that's important in terms of, uh, protecting our heritage.
Anyone else?
Yes. Same way. Oh, you want to go? You got it. You said, you sure? Yep. No, I just would love to, uh, see if we can, like I said earlier, Robin, work on digitizing the documents, even though we would save the actual document, but just to make sure it lives on for a very long time. Um, so I would love to work with you on that and see how that can happen, so. Go ahead. Just want to say yay, history.
Yay, history.
Um, if there's nothing else, roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Um, next, we have the request to appoint Temporary Finance Review Committee. Um, you want to do it, or you want me to just do? So this was, um, a committee that we decided that, um, we're going to put together to try to develop recommendations on potential future revenue sources, which might include ballot, um, initiatives. Um, and the appointments, um, recommendations are from me, and, uh, the council can, um, discuss it, uh, or take it down, whatever. So for the request to appoint Temporary Finance Review Committee, the first recommendation is to recommend Tim Hillman.
Now, I'll make a motion to recommend Timothy Hillman for...
Second.
Position of Finance Committee Member.
Second.
It's been moved in second. A part, motion to appoint.
You said motion to recommend.
Oh, sorry. Motion to appoint, sorry.
I second the updated, uh, motion.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. The next recommendation that I have for the, uh, Finance Review Committee is Saleem Siddiqui.
I'll make a motion to appoint Saleem Siddiqui to, I said appoint this time, right? Yeah, appoint, uh, Saleem Siddiqui as a, uh, a financial committee member.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Next recommendation is for Regina Jones.
I'll make a motion to appoint Regina Jones to the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. And the last person is, uh, that I would want, want to recommend for appointment is Deborah McDonald.
Motion to appoint Deborah McDonald to the Temporary Finance Review Committee.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Very happy that we had a lot of people with extensive financial backgrounds applying for our committee.
I agree with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Next, the request to appoint Historical District Commission Representatives. We only had one application for that, and I think that's going to, does that leave us?
You will still need, there still is two vacancies after this.
Still two vacancies for?
Yeah, there is a quorum to meet, though.
Okay. Um, and you already heard about what the Historical Society does, and so it's my recommendation to appoint Robin Roberts.
Historical, this is the Historical District Commission.
Oh, well, you kind of...
Similar, similar, but not the same.
Would you like to explain that?
You, you got it.
Okay. Nonetheless, Robin has been doing it already, um, for quite a while, and so, um, it is recommend, my recommendation to keep Robin, um, on this commission, and so that's my recommendation.
Yeah, I would gladly, uh, make a motion to, uh, appoint Robin Roberts to the Historic District Commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Thank you for your service this long, and, um, thank you for reapplying. I appreciate it.
Yay, history.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Last, the request to approve City Administrator's Performance Goals.
Yes, just so we officially have these on the books, uh, earlier today at our study session, we narrowed down the goals. Uh, it would be budget and finance, sub- uh, submit balanced budgets before ordinance deadlines. Uh, topic, city staff posting open positions within seven calendar days of notified vacancy. The city still employs seventy-five percent of those hired by the city administrator at the time of evaluation. Each staff member attends at least one professional development training per fiscal year and develop a formal succession plan. And for the category, residents can attend at least one community event per quarter.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Administrator Performance Goals, as stated.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make sure that residents are clear and transparent. Part of the compensation package that was offered to the city administrator includes bonuses for meeting performance metric goals. So these are the goals to get the bonus that hopefully will, uh, support the behaviors and performance that we are looking for from the city administrator. Um, so people should have that in mind.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Next, we have the City Administrator Report.
Nothing to major, just want to make Council and public aware, uh, during Friday's DDA meeting, we were able to confirm a new Community Economic Development Director. Austin Colson is who it is. Uh, he will be coming to us from Hamtramck, where he currently serves as Assistant Community Economic Development Director. Uh, I had the pleasure of working with the DDA committee for this hiring process, and we think Austin is going to bring good energy and good experience to the community to help, help us continue moving us forward. Uh, his tentative start date right now is June tenth.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Nothing for me today.
Reports from, uh, Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Downtown Development, we already did that. Planning Commission?
Uh, nothing to report. We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow.[1568.92] It has been canceled due to a lack of agenda items. But I'm sure we will pick it up in June.
Parks and Rec?
Go Parks.
Tree Committee, I believe that we have a meeting tomorrow at 4:30, if I'm not mistaken. School Board.
Well, we had School Board President here today to discuss the Southfield Plan for University and McIntyre. Also, they appointed the new School Board Representative. So, I did attend that meeting. I was able to meet the young woman who attends University High School. She's a rising senior. So, they always appoint rising seniors to that, to that board. So, I'm excited for her to start coming to our meetings and reporting out what they are doing at university and maybe some of the surrounding schools that are near university. So, excited for that, for transparency, for residents to know what's going on in Southfield Public Schools. So, thank you.
And I would say, a very good job for following through with this and really moving our relationship with Southfield School Board forward.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Thank you. For Jalen. And we've heard Councilman Jennings. Any unfinished or new business? Public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. You can speak basically about anything that you would like. Is there anyone that would like to speak? All right. Mayor and Council Comments. I'm really excited that we are getting the Finance Review Committee. Again, just to reiterate, it's to move forward with the finances and finding ways to bring in revenue. It's not for discussion of what one might think is going on with the finances or giving opinions of what was wrong with previous years. This is an opportunity for us to move forward and come up with some really good ideas for our financing. And I think that we got some really good people. I agree that we have very strong people with accounting backgrounds. I truly appreciate every single one of them for really giving the reason why they wanted to be on it because I think that's important that the people that are going to be on committees give the reason why they should be selected along with submitting their resume. I think that was all that I needed to say. Juneteenth, anything you want to, celebration? No? Yes?
So, Juneteenth, we're in the works. As you know, we had a little hiccup with resignations. But we are actively working on getting the Juneteenth event situated. So, more than likely, it'll be on June 15, which is a Saturday. So, we're, we're in the crossfires, but we're working on it diligently. So, we should have a flyer ready coming shortly, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Grace, and everyone else on the committee for helping blow out some fires.
And then, there's Food Truck Friday?
Food Truck Friday, Parks and Rec, Go Parks. We have signed an agreement. It eludes me at the moment. But every Friday, food trucks come and they are in the northeast corner of this parking lot, weather permitting. There's a different one each week and they are here to serve us. Please come out on Fridays, taste different foods and support local businesses as well.
What time on Friday? Is it like all day or?
That's a great question.
It's usually 4:30 to 7:30.
Thank you.
Is what I was going to say also.
And then, Lathir Music Festival. Really excited for what's going on, the lineup for it from the DDA meeting on Friday. I think that that is going to be fantastic. And I appreciate you having it up and for you also to be a part of it.
Thank you. Glad to do it.
So, is there anyone else that has?
No.
Go ahead.
No, I just want to thank Jalen too for the Southfield Public Schools because that's something that is very long overdue. It has not been a great relationship. And I think we needed to resurrect it and, you know, make it better so that we can support, you know, our residents and their use of the schools. Want to thank everybody who was involved for trivia night. I see Carol's here and Dalton's here, members of the committee.
Go Rec.
What's that?
Go Rec.
You're very verbose tonight. But yeah, it was, it was, it was a fun night. Michelle, I think you put an extra page in on the distribution report that has the salaries for the second two weeks. That was great. It was awesome. It's long overdue, so I appreciate that. And then, a question I forgot to ask in the study session. Are we going to get a rate book? And we talked about that. Will that be in the next, subsequent meeting?
Yeah, so, over the past couple of weeks, I've been working. I finally got it over to Michelle and Steve and our new staff because I want them to also take a look at it. Actually, they've been providing the feedback. There's too much feedback to look around. But it will be a June meeting.
Perfect, perfect. It's on hand.
I also wanted to thank Jalen for all of his hard work with the Southfield School Board. It's, to Bruce's point, been a challenging relationship for a while now. It's really promising to see that starting to improve and to mend that fence. So, thanks for doing that. Looking forward to seeing what we find out next month when the student representative to the Southfield School Board shows up. Well, maybe it'll be in September.
Yeah.